Call this meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Becken.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Truster.
Here.
All right, very good. You all have received your packets and in it you have your first agenda item consent agenda, the regular city council meeting minutes of September the 12th and accounts payable in the amount of $1,988,659.63. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
Sure.
All right, motion by Leo, second by Truster. Any comments?
I had two.
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you. I had two tiny little edits. Be under B, special event. After second by Leo, we changed the table to two table. And date should read August, sorry, October 1st. Minor, minor.
Okay.
Yeah, Adam Mayor, just for the public, the audience tonight, just we're approving over almost $2 million of bills, but almost 1.8 million of that is passed through tax funds. It's tax season, so I think it's important to know we don't typically spend that kind of money every month.
Anything else?
Do you know why that screen is not? We talked about that.
Yeah, it's an audio visual issue I'm working with right now, so I thought.
Just wondering.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Anyone else? All right, this is roll call vote, please.
Becken.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes.
All right, very good. Next up, we have staff reports, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, City Manager's report is on page nine. Happy to have some highlights if you'd like, please. Okay, then. So tomorrow, 10:00 AM, we're having our first Parks and Public Works Committee meeting. Well, kind of new to us. There used to be a Parks and Public Works Committee about 10 years ago. So the agenda's been posted. We're gonna have a presentation. It's gonna be a high level meeting, but everyone's welcome to join. Newish item, Pure Michigan Commercial Shoot Feedback. Really good feedback from that group. They must have been 30 people, five vans, a lot of filming equipment. So we have some notes from that group. I'm pretty proud of that. Also, newish, working with AT&amp;T still, and they're gonna bring their engineers back to look at, this is on page 10, look at putting their equipment inside the Mount Bald Head radar tower. So they've completed their feasibility study, and that's passed all the tests. So they're coming back and they're working on logistics about getting fiber and electric up to that facility. So it's very exciting because I know that's been a high priority for the city and the council. Also, newish, and these are just the highlights. We have the initial feedback on the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund grant, which both the city of Sagatuck and the township applied for. Each applied for $300,000. This is on top of the federal grant that we got a verbal commitment for. And so we got the initial scoring, and it turned out pretty good according to the engineers. They said, good for the township, but also the city got their feet actually on the score, and they said it's very good. And so more details to come on that. And then, let's see, ongoing conversations with Oval Beach and Operations. City staff plans to attend, looking at a swim smart system, which is kind of like a signal system for beach safety. That's coming up here in the near future. And also, South Haven, I've already reported on this, but South Haven, they're hosting a meeting with all the coastal communities in our region to go to that. The Police Department did confirm to attend that meeting. I have not heard back from the Fire Department on that to date. So those are highlights. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for the manager? Doesn't look like it. All right, I'll put our Ryan Cummins on the spot and have him come up for his, he's had his very first report in the packet which he was thrilled to submit, so I was very happy to see. Thank you.
Yeah, well, good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's good to be in front of you again, and this time a few weeks in. And it's been a whirlwind, a little bit like a drinking from a fire hose with all the information that's coming my way. But it's been really enjoyable to really dive in. And really, I appreciate the internal staff support, the resources from the legal team, consultants that we've been working with, and really the patience of the community members. I want to make sure and say that because I know a lot of folks have, you know, they had projects in progress, and you know, we kind of had to kind of get up to speed on some of those things. But I think we've worked through a, we're working through a flow right now, and we're moving in the right direction, so I appreciate their patience. But just a few highlights, you know, I've spent a lot of time over the last few weeks, kind of trying to get up to speed on the zoning ordinance. Not that I'm gonna have it all memorized by any means, but to kind of know how it's laid out, where different things are at, what to be aware of, general common questions that folks have on a regular basis, you know, where the historic district requirements, short-term rentals, signs, expanded outdoors dining areas, trees have come up even in the last couple of weeks. So I've done a lot of ordinance reading and different parts of that to try to kind of maneuver through those. Took a good look at the historic district boundaries and preservation guidelines that are in place, and what the contributing resources are, what the non-contributing resources are. That's come up a number of times. I've reviewed all the planning and zoning forms that are on the websites, where what's out there. In fact, there's been a couple of forums that I've worked with the consultant on that. He felt there was some more information that probably should be there for us on the front end. So we've actually been able to modify a couple of those forums right off the bat based on that feedback. Been really lucky to spend a few afternoons with your former zoning administrator Cindy Osmond. Very, very grateful to her and Sagatuck Township for allowing her to spend some time here. That's kind of a, that shows the partnership that you have with your surrounding communities. And really grateful because she's been able to really show me that software side of things and that process side of things. And she's continued to be a resource, you know, by phone as well, and has been more than willing to help. It's been a wealth of knowledge. And so I'm really grateful to her and to Sagatuck Township for that. As far as projects go, you know, a lot of it's been kind of getting up to speed where different things are at. Self and the city manager have discussed a number of items and kind of where you're at, and you've been kind of looping me in on the emails at this point to kind of see what their work, what you have been, have been working on. But reviewed your 2022 strategic goals, attended the meeting with AT&amp;T with the city manager to kind of find out their progress and plans and next steps. Reviewed your category B Community Service Infrastructure Fund application, so fingers crossed there'll be some good news and some roadwork will be done downtown here. So that was actually a pretty exciting application to see a lot of great work's already been done. Reviewed the City Hall exterior summary of work and technical specifications draft, so that exterior work that's kind of been in progress. I mean, that's getting closer to bid. The city manager shared that with the Historic District Chairman, and eventually the Historic District, well, we'll take a look at that in more in-depth to make sure that we, as a city, are also following our same rules that we have in place on such a beautiful and historic building. And the city manager and I discussed special event processes and historical practices, and I think over the winter, those will be reviewed a little bit more in detail. And had, was able to spend some time with your fantastic DPW crew. They were all very welcoming and took me out in the big trucks. And I got to see them do the great work and hard work that they do with taking leaves and not even sticks, larger than sticks, branches and everything else, and taking multiple loads out to the airport property, I learned it was called, and then touring their facilities. So, you know, everybody's been super supportive. And then I included in here just kind of a summary of some of the casework we've been working on. Some of it's been more in-depth and more detailed, and some of it's been a lot of phone calls and inquiries and folks that are kind of trying to tee up different projects and kind of trying to find out some information. But there's a lot of moving parts. The fire hose will continue for a while, but I appreciate the patience and thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
This is all within the first two weeks.
I know, it's great. Thank you very much. This is wonderful. Yeah, it's.
If I may, I just wanted to say how much, Ryan, how much I appreciated the planning and zoning casework report where you've got addressed type of requests and status.
Yeah.
Love that. That's really nice. I think all of us hear from folks in the community about certain projects or certain things that they might have going on. And so it's really nice to have this type of report all in one place.
Excellent. Yeah, we'll work to continue it. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have Lieutenant Enstfield on the line? By chance, you wanna, hi Brett, you wanna report in on anything?
Um, yeah, we're just been planning on some of the fall events. Worked with the city leaders today and working through those. We've been spending a lot of time up at the school and all those different activities that revolve around that. Yeah, and then there's been a couple speeding complaints and stuff. We've been directing some guys, girls, decent enforcement in those areas. Other than that, falls upon us in winter soon, and we just remind everybody to talk to people, to let us know if we're leaving town, you know, through the city tracking, so that houses are going to be empty so we can do our winter check.
Okay, I caught about every fifth word on that, Brett. I'm sorry. I was trying really hard.
Can you hear me better now or?
No, it's all good. You're fine. Don't worry about it. It'll hurt my head. Thank you. I appreciate you being on.
Madam Mayor, some of the highlights with the Sheriff's Department. We've been working on the special events for the upcoming events, and that's kind of a point of focus at the moment. So we went over the Glow in the Park event, as well as the Homecoming Parade, which is very exciting for a lot of folks.
Great, very good. All right, the other reports that you have in your packet, Treasurers Report, DPW Report, Fire and Engineer. John Moxley, I know we're gonna hear from you later, so I was gonna just have you give us highlights at that time. Is that okay? Or you want to, it's up to you. Do you want to do it now or you want to do it together?
I'll give you two minutes now.
Go for it.
We'll save Water Street for the, for the actual agenda item. Just a couple of things. We've got some, a lead on a new, not new funding program, but a funding program that's gotten an influx of funding. So we're gonna be working with city staff on that. That's got a hard deadline of November 1st. So next month, we'll probably have a little bit more concrete on that. City Hall helping staff get that tuned up for hopefully spring, get the exterior taken care of, dressed up, try and get things looking good. So we're helping with that, getting some contractors able to quote it for us, bid it for us. Campbell Road is one item away from being completely done. We're just waiting on a hydrant part, and then we can call that one done. So, yeah, I'll save the rest for my time.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, with that, we're to agenda changes. I would like to make one change to move mayor comments to item number seven. All right. Okay, with that, mayor comments. I just want to bring to everybody's attention, included in our packet at the very end was a petition to rectify an abuse of power, so I thought I just would address this right away so that we could move on to the important business of the city. So on March 11th, 2020, the City Council voted unanimously to adopt Resolution Number 200311-B, a resolution to approve the City of Sagatuck Boards and Commissions' selection policy. I appreciate that legal counsel, specifically Christopher Patterson, took the time this past Friday to review and offer advice regarding the petition to rectify an abuse of power and the resolution. After his review, it is clear that I erred in my implementation of the policy. Legal counsel also made it clear that no remedy is offered that would void the appointments and that state law would control and would not require a redo of the appointments. Also, per legal counsel recommendation, I contacted the Chair of the ZBA and the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Both individuals are supportive of the appointments and do not feel that a redo is necessary. As a result, I apologize for misinterpreting the process and promise to do better in the future. With that, Jake is online from Legal Counsel. Jake, you have anything to add?
Yeah, I guess just a couple of thoughts and also my condolences for Chris not being able to be here. He had a conflict, so I'm kind of standing in for him. Essentially, the resolution in question does not contain any penalties for violations. Our characterization of this document is that it is one of internal policy which recommends best practices for making appointments. And so the lack of penalties for a failure to comply with that, you know, we think that this is more of a guidance document than something, say, like, you know, an ordinance that would have prescribed specific penalties for violations. And you briefly touched on that state law issue, and I guess to that effect, I would just note that appointments to the zoning board of appeals, those are governed by the state statute called the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and that requires that members are to be appointed by a majority vote. Appointments to the Planning Commission are governed by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, and that also provides that appointments are to be made by the chief elected official, subject to approval by a majority vote of the members of the legislative body, which would be the council in this case. And so we understand that the appointments, you know, irrespective of whether they complied with an internal city policy, they complied with state law, and we think it is significant. Also, that state law, both these statutes, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, provide for the removal of a member of the Planning Commission or Zoning Board of Appeals only in the event of very specific circumstances which involve misfeasance, malfeasance, or non-feasance in office by that appointee. And I think from the facts presented to us, it's very clear that, you know, none of the deficiencies relate to the conduct of the appointed members. So under state law, there's really no grounds to invalidate these appointments. And, and like you mentioned, meeting with the heads of the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals, I think that, you know, complies with the spirit of the policy and such that, you know, any remaining deviations that might exist are likely harmless error. So I guess to wrap up, you know, of course, full compliance with this policy is the best practice. But our conclusion is that the council's appointments are effective under state law, and then no further action is needed here.
All right, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor, I may ask.
Yeah, please.
I'd like to share in your apology and your mea culpa for violating the resolution or the spirit of the resolution. Upon receipt of the petition, as city staff, I do a basic analysis. You know, what is the petition? Is it valid? And then what is, most importantly for the city, what's the corrective action or what's the potential damage? And so in all three instances, and especially with the corrective action, we just heard from our attorney that not much is gonna change with moving forward. So I do want to share in the apology.
Very good. With that, we'll be, we're at public comment on agenda items only. I see we have a nice packed house, so I feel that probably some folks have some things they'd like to say. Please come up to the podium, introduce yourself and your place of residence, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Peggy Sanford. I live at 160 Tack in Sagatuck. Been in the same house for 48 years. I've been here a long time. My question, whoops, where did the lawyer go?
This is public. If I may, point of, point of order, Madam Former Mayor, this is public comment. And so it's not a question and answers. No questions, public comment.
I'll leave it at whatever happened to the charter rules. There are rules in the charter, and I don't think you guys followed them. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Helen Baldwin, City of Sagatuck. I have a few observations about the petition that was attached to tonight's meeting packet. The petition states it was circulated in the city of Sagatuck and is signed by Sagatuck residents. At first glance, it looks like it has support of about 200 Sagatuck residents, which would obviously reflect a significant percentage of our population. However, the first 11 pages are submitted twice. Of the remaining signatures, about 46 appear to be actual Sagatuck residents plus a small number of signatures from non-resident property owners. I wanted to point this out to the extent that council's views on the petition are influenced by the number of actual residents who signed it, and I think if you're time.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm gonna stray from the topic at hand. Dan Fox, as you know, I'm the council representative to the Fire Board, and this is the report of the Fire Board's meeting on the 19th of September. And it augments the data that's already been furnished to y'all. I don't think this was in that data. We approved payments of $628,976. That includes, I don't like Mark's comments, but things in some perspective, that includes a $400,000 final payment on the new, new engine, new truck now in service. Two added notes on the statistics you received. Overlapping calls are up 40 so far in the year, which is 25% increase year to year. I think, you know, overlapping calls simply mean more than one call at the same time. That puts added demand on the resources of this, including the staff, when two or more wells are simultaneous. And so it's a number we watch pretty closely. Average response time at six minutes, 23 seconds is up 51 seconds over the month. And that appears to be related, that extra minute or close to a minute is apparently the result of heavy traffic during that period slowing trucks, slowing response. We received grants of $2,437 for staff and command training and another $1,274 for marine vessel monitoring equipment, so that we have another marine vessel that takes water on. It will monitor itself and let us know. A special guest to the, to the board, Dave Becken, Mark's cousin, informed the board of a donation of $7,410 from the Gerald and Jeanette Becken Foundation, an amount that will be repeated annually for the next four years, five years in total. Jerry was a longtime and beloved member of the Fire Board. There'll be a formal ceremony commemorating this magnificent donation and adding Jerry's name to one of the fire engines. Jerry was renowned, among other things, on the board for his sense of humor and for always being the one that moved for ending the meeting, adjourned the meeting. The board recognized Christine Gargano for her 36 years of service to the district. There's a commemoration of that coming up. A preliminary discussion laid the groundwork for a further study of the district's rising expenses for support of special events. Early thought is that a number of civic events, the major ones, Fourth of July, Halloween and the like, merit, certainly merit commitment of the district's resources on a no-charge basis or included in the tax funding the district receives. But other privately funded events, for example, should be assigned certain amounts, maybe the total amount of fees for the use of district resources, those trying to divine which belongs and which category remains ahead of us. And finally, the chief advised the board that 59 thank you notes have been received from the Sagatuck Middle School related to the Labor Day Bridgewater security efforts provided by the Fire District. Any questions? Let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online?
No.
No hands? I've got a couple of hands raised. Yeah. Yep. Mr. Medler, Mr. Johnson. Yep. Barry, you want to go? That's what I see. I've got Barry first. Sorry, that's what I see on my line. Sorry. Introduce yourself.
I'll be short and sweet. Thank you, Garnett and Ryan, for addressing the petition situation. I share a concern with many of the constituents regarding that procedure and that interviews were conducted behind closed doors and without the inclusion of the respective commission board chairs and then serving as city staff. And again, you've addressed that, and I look forward to, you know, following procedures. Many people know I'm a procedure guy, but it just, I'm gonna conclude with just some timeless quotes, one from Patrick Henry. Deliverings of a people never were nor ever will be secure when the transactions of their rulers may be concealed from them. And short and sweet from George Washington, laws made by common consent must not be trampled by individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Gary?
Yes, Gary Medler, Sagatuck. I want to thank the city for including the petition as a communication on today's agenda. Unfortunately, the listing should have read petition to rectify an abuse of power. The public is entitled to proper notice and transparency. Article 1, Section 3 of the Michigan Constitution grants to the people the right to petition the government for a redress of grievances. 114 registered voters, property owners, and residents of Sagatuck exercise that right by signing the petition. So many more were in agreement but unwilling to sign for fear of retaliation or demonization. Such fear is pervasive. Maybe the mayor can disclose how many signers she contacted and why. Such contact has a perception of interference, intimidation, and failed threat. Today, I was informed that one contact was, which was an affirmative act of intimidation, coupled with a real threat of retaliation. Everyone has their First Amendment rights to petition the government without fear of intimidation or retribution. Petition does not raise an unknown issue. At least twice, council was advised on the improper appointments, and yet the violative acts continue. Affirmative action is required by council to ensure validity of decisions made by the improper appointees and to ensure compliance going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. See another hands up there, Madam Clerk?
No, I do not.
All right, very good. Thank you much. With that, we have no introduction of ordinances, no public hearings, and no unfinished business. So we'll move to our new business recommendation award, Water Street Sidewalk Improvements.
Good evening. We had a bid opening here last week on the Water Street Sidewalk Improvements Project is what we've titled it. It's been on the city's radar, on our radar for a number of years. This is the sidewalk on the west side of Water Street, really between Spear and Willow Park. Over the years, several property owners have improved that area already, done, done some of the job that was originally envisioned years and years ago. So this project is really a sidewalk infill project with some landscaping in front of Star of Sagatuck there. This project will basically carry that sidewalk along the back of the curb all the way to where the concrete steps are at Willow Park, just past the Willow Tree. It includes, like I mentioned, some landscaping work, putting things back together to, to take that sidewalk that was built with Star of Sagatuck up against the property line and kind of rearrange that front yard so that it's not all hard surface at the request of the property owners. It includes some irrigation repair because that area is landscaped. And then fast forwarding to the bid opening, it was truly a bid singular opening. The, the bad news is we only received one bid. We would have liked to get a handful of bids. We were in contact with a number of concrete contractors, landscapers across the gamut, really, and, and this just seems to be the way contracting work is these days, that if you can get a quote on something and somebody willing to do it, you count yourself lucky, and that's, that's where we are. Catterburg Verhaig out of Grand Rapids, the good news is they are very qualified for this work. I did a park project with them personally last year that they did a really good job, a lot of attention to detail, just the kind of things we're looking for on a project like this. They, they want to walk away with everybody feeling very good about the quality of work, so we're happy about that. They have proposed. They have, uh, proposed a, uh, mid-October start date with a completion date right around the second of December. So getting it done this year, uh, grass probably won't pop up until next spring, but, um, everything will be set up to, to by the time, uh, the busy summer tourism season is here again. That'll be open for, for visitors to get all the way from the park up and down, uh, Water Street. Basically completing the, the sidewalk on that side of Water Street all the way to the north. Um, I have there the, the bid tabulation. Uh, my engineer's estimate for this is a little bit of a cheat. We got quotes on this project, uh, in May. So basically what I did is I took the, the quote we got, figured in a little bit of pencil sharpening for competition, which, which obviously didn't materialize. So I'm a little bit lower, but still within the realm of, of what we think this project value is. Again, the caveat being today, it is what it is. Two years ago, it would probably be about half this, but, uh, that's kind of what we're all dealing with.
Yeah.
So what we have for you today is a recommendation of award letter. Our recommendation is the award to Catterburg Verhaig. If you, uh, agree with that award, we will get a recommend or a notice of award out to the contractor and begin the process of assembling contracts, uh, so that the city can, can contract this work and get it done.
All right.
Any questions?
To get us started, I'll entertain a motion and then we'll open for discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the bid for sidewalk improvements on Water Street in the amount of $64,632 from the Public Work Project General Fund, contract to be executed by the mayor or the mayor pro tem.
Motion by Dean?
Second.
All right. Second by Leo. All right. Questions? Comments? This is, I'm going ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Any other additional costs built that aren't, uh, appearing in the bid? Construction management fees, additional engineering fees or anything like that?
Yeah. Construction engineering, we've been doing this kind of on a, just an hourly basis. It's a small enough project. It isn't a huge hit. I'd probably recommend a $5,000 to $10,000. That's even probably heavy, given the contractor that we have. We'll have some contract administration costs and probably want to send a tester out, uh, to test concrete, things like that. But, uh, pretty nominal in the, in the grand scheme.
Usually see a 10% bump for construction management fees. You're, you're kind of talking.
Yep, that's, that's right in the range.
So we're really talking a project a little north of 70.
Oh, 70 probably all in is a good.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Good evening, John. How are you? I had made mention at the last meeting that, um, it might be worth considering putting in this is probably more DPW, but working in conjunction with engineers to put a crosswalk at Lucy, or pardon me, at Water, just where the Water Street east side sidewalk ends. So I think what's going to happen, at least I envisioned it. I've seen people do it as they get down to the end and they're like, well, where do I go from here? They see sidewalk on the other side, their natural inclination is cross and make their way around, which there is, I don't know if there's a short sidewalk on Lucy, but the point being is that with all the activity out there, I think it'd be important to have a safe sidewalk, crosswalk there for people to cross.
That's a, that's a great thought. I, I hadn't even, shame on me, I hadn't even thought of that. But yeah, I will, I will check it out on my way out. And, uh, yeah, we can, we can work on that. We have unit prices for just about everything we need in this contract. So we can, we can make that change, make that addition.
Thank you. Madam Mayor? Yeah, I, I, I did include that, um, in the description. Yeah. However, um, has not been incorporated in the project yet. So we did not lose. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Um, I have just, uh, a point. This was approved by the Planning Commission about two years ago. Is that correct? Do we know?
Oh, my gosh.
I think, I think.
Yeah. It's been a while.
I'm seeing a shaking no head from the former chair.
Not two years ago, it was from council by then.
When the, um, shanty was put in, they approved it.
That's right.
That was put in.
Okay. Great. I, I had some memory of that. And then, um, I, I, like many people, the cost cut my eye, but, um, it looks like it's, uh, very involved. And I just think it's important, um, that we go ahead and have sidewalk access for this end of town. I think it's, it's an unsafe situation. And, um, I agree with the manager and with Russ that we should look at a crosswalk.
All right. Anyone else? All right. With that, this is a roll call vote.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Who is?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Buster?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, John.
Thanks, John.
All right. With that, we're at public comment on any item. Again, feel free to come on up, introduce yourself. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
How are you?
Hey, Gregory.
I'm a Gregory Muncie Sagatuck resident. I just wanted to reach out and remind you, as I do every year here, that, um, it's getting cold outside, isn't it? And that the straw and corn stalks have arrived. I helped, uh, Farmer Elmer get them off and drop them off over at the DPW. And, uh, as Sadaba Board has asked me to assist with the annual decorating task, they've also asked me to assist with their events moving forward. Uh, so I'm happy to be back, not as administrator of Sadaba, but as an event facilitator. And, uh, I think we're going to have a, uh, continue having a lot of the fun that you hear folks talk about that they have here. And, uh, you know, it brings that, that fall brings a little bit more tourism and it brings a little bit of special. We get phone calls. I know here at City Hall, I get phone calls with Sadaba when I worked as administrator. Everybody looks forward to it. We're you, we're working with Scott to help distribute. They were just dropped off yesterday. We're using the same map that we've used in years prior. So however you've seen it before, it'll be very similar. And, uh, a big thank you, honestly, to Sadaba. The Sagatuck Douglas Area Business Association, who has been decorating the town for fall for a couple of decades now. I know I've been a part of it for about 15 years myself, and I don't know how long they've been doing it before that, but I know it's been going on for a long time. I also want to give a big thank you to, uh, Sadaba wants to give a big thank you to CJ and Kimberly Badgerack, um, who for the second year in a row have donated the pumpkins and all the gourds that helped decorate the area that folks like to comment about. And, uh, in years past, we've had different folks volunteer those pumpkins for our, for our town, including Cranes, Breed's Farm and other private donors. So just want to let you know, completion and bows and all the frills will be ready by the end of the week.
Sparkly or no sparkly?
Um, I, I don't think we're going to do glitter, but I do think there's going to be a hint of gold. I'm unders, I'm understanding. That's what I'm hearing from the grapevine at least.
All right. Thank you. Other folks? Anybody else in the audience? Yeah, we got, we'll do everybody here first.
Dan Fox, getting back to the subject from before, petition subject, and without trying to be confrontational, which is something I am given to at times. But in the spirit of transparency and openness and accuracy, uh, one of the facts that was left out of all the recitations, including those from the attorneys, is that the resolution, whatever that is, 200 dash, whatever it is, number council resolution that was unanimously voted on, was offered as a resolution to this council by the currently serving mayor. So. I have memory lapses. We all have memory lapses. I tend though not to forget my own ideas all that quickly, but, but that's a fact.
Thank you.
Captain Simon 428 Butler Street. Respectfully, I would like to give a little clarity to that petition. I think that the council, rather than sorting out who are residents, who votes, who's this, who's that? That the compilation of signators to that petition was people that have investment in this community. It could be a person who works here every day. It could be a person who owns a rental property. It could be a person who operates a business here. The totality of all those individuals, whether they are a voting person in this community, is that they care about this community and that the value of their thoughts to push us forward, united, is worth something to us. So rather than sorting out all these little pockets of people who have value and who don't, we ought to observe everybody's voice. Thank you.
Anybody else? Madam Clerk, anyone online? Up. Let's see. I got Gary. Hand up.
Gary's gone.
There he is.
You're muted, Gary.
I just, I, I didn't know I was supposed to take my hand off, so.
Okay. Very good. Barry, your hand is up. Is that flipped over from before?
I learned something new today.
Very good. Barry Johnson.
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor. Barry Johnson, 334 Main Street, Sagatuck. Uh, at the, uh, last meeting, Councilman Gardner requested to know what our, uh, costs have been for the Dune Ridge litigation. And I was hoping to hear the, uh, city manager give a report on that as requested by the councilman.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else online? Okay. All right. Yep. Correspondence is in your packet. We've received it and discussed it. Boards, commissions and committees. I'll go to the mayor pro tem first.
Yeah. Parks and Public Works Committee. I think I'm going to take my, um, authority as mayor pro tem to call it the PPW. PPW has its first kickoff meeting tomorrow morning. I'm very excited, uh, to get the ball rolling on this very important committee. First time we've had one in 10 years, as the manager said. So very excited to get together with the team. I think they're going to be moving pretty quick.
Russ, you've got some good news.
Uh, yeah, actually, thank you very much. So for those of you that have not been watching the social media or, um, hearing the news on the street, the State Historic Preservation Office Review Board, SHIPO, as it's commonly known, approved the nomination of the Mount Bald Head Radar Station, also known as the Gap Filler Annex to the National Register of Historic Places. That was a big deal. I got to learn a little bit about the state of Michigan at that meeting and, um, it was very well done. Chuck Gustafson, who, uh, spearheaded the actual application itself, deserves loads of credit. It would not have happened without his, um, leadership and vision on this. And actually, um, a little bit of history on that. Jim Schmicken, who some of you may know, got that process started back in, I think about 2016. And Jim stepped away from it and then Chuck picked it up because he has some personal, actually Jim and Chuck saw each other and then, and he saw a bunch of radar books on Chuck's bookshop. He said, hey, do you like radar? So Chuck's like, yeah, I love radar. And he says, I got something you might be interested in. And Chuck took it from there. And then it, it went dormant with COVID because of just shutdowns of, of a bunch of things. And then as soon as that was done, Chuck picked it back up. Um, and then in the spring of 2021, actually in the winter of 2021, I went up to Mount Bald Head and, and, and was just ashamed by the condition of the site. And, uh, contacted Mayor Becken at the time and I said, hey, Mark, I'd like to do something about this. And Mark suggested putting together a work group, a resolution, which we did. It was adopted in May of 2020, 2021. Uh, that group has been instrumental in getting the site in the building up to speed. The building's been painted, uh, removed trees going through the roof. A temporary roof has been put on it. There's a fence going in, a lot of improvements to the site. And that group has just been fantastic. And the events on Friday are culmination of all that work and that support from the community. And, um, we should just be very proud of the fact that we've got a site in this community that has been going to be recognized at the national level for a significance, cultural, historical significance to this nation as well as this community. And, uh, throughout that time, um, and, and those of the, those of you that have been involved, I've heard so many personal stories from people about that site. And as a matter of fact, today I got a message from a woman who said, actually got married there. So, you know, it's impacted a lot of people personally. And at the end of the meeting on Friday, I went up to one of the board members and he said, oh my gosh, I go to Sagatuck all the time. I never even knew this was there. And the Gap Filler Annex, which is the official name of it, the ball itself is the icon. That's what most people know, but that's just a part of the site. So, uh, we're very excited about this. This will be, it's about a 45 day turnaround to the US Department of the Interior for them to actually take the nomination and they usually approve it. So we expect that news to be coming probably within the next six weeks or so.
Great.
Good job. Yeah. Great job. And I'm going to finish by saying, Mark, at the time, he's going to remember this. Mayor Becken at the time said, Russ, your job is to convince me that we shouldn't tear that down.
Very hard.
Okay. That was my singular goal in that class. And, and Mayor, may I, um, may, may I, may I tag team with Russ on this? Russ and I, both the, uh, the two council members representing, uh, the work group, extremely proud of the work they group. It was my first chance getting to know Russ. We worked together on this for, Jesus, o- over a year. And, um, this really excites me because it, it's sort of what we've always, I think, wanted to do here on this council. It's to listen to the voters, what their priorities are, and then find creative solutions and the right team to tackle these problems. This is right up there with what Councilman, Councilwoman Stanton did with the Demerit Fish Shanty. This is right up with what the folks over in Douglas did with the Root Beer Barrel. It's taking our history, it's taking our history and returning it, preserving it, but also returning it to productive use. As the city manager has mentioned, you know, we've got AT&amp;T coming again, uh, on Friday, I believe, to once again, uh, look at putting, discreetly putting antennas inside the radar dome. So, you know, this will be a game changer for us. You know, we could suddenly have cell service at Oval Beach. Suddenly downtown could have better cell service, you know? So we're really excited and we, and we hope that we can continue to work in this private, public kind of way, bringing in the right people. And I really, I think it's going to be a model for what we're going to try to do on the, on the Parks and Public Works Committee is to really bring in the talent. Because, you know, this was, this was multi-jurisdictional. We worked with the History Center. We, we worked with, with some of these great amateur historians. Chuck Gustafson, amazing to work with. Uh, we, other gentleman that I had the pleasure to meet, I can't name them all. There were so many of them, uh, that, you know, came from all over the tri-community area to, to work together on a project that's going to benefit not just Sagatuck. But if, if this proves to be as effective as it was, now that radar station used to be able to detect Russian bombers at 60 miles away. At least that's what it was designed to. Thank God they weren't detected. But, you know, this could benefit the tri-community area if, if, if it works as well as I, I think the AT&amp;T engineers hope it does. So once again, really proud of the team and, um, it was, it's just been a great project to work on. And I think it could be a model for future projects.
Very good. Well done. Well done to you both.
Good. Lauren? Uh, Historic District Commission just meets, uh, next Thursday, so nothing yet.
All right. Ken?
Yeah, we, uh, Cal, Leam's Lake Swinwater Authority met a week ago. Each month we have to submit to Eagle, uh, monthly operating report information, which is tests of, uh, both the water quality that our wells produce, along with the, uh, treated wastewater effluent that gets deposited back into the Calamouz River. For the first time in history, the effluent, the wastewater that went out to the Lake Michigan had traces of hexachloro benzene, uh, appear, slight elevation, never done before. Got a little science lesson from our manager that's, it's a, uh, a pesticide that, uh, that was pretty much banned in most industries. He feels that it's possible that it's coming from the marijuana grow facilities, because, or homegrown facilities that end up, it's not anything to be concerned about. Cause it's get tested every year. If it continues to increase, we'll have to be probably put on some type of remedial action. Maybe more often reports, but the, the manager thinks it's probably just type of a seasonal thing or a one for, so, but it's something that, uh, I think we should, uh, should be aware of. Other than that, it was pretty much just getting updates on, uh, Cal Lake activities with one, except we had one actual item that we approved, uh, 46,000, an amount not to exceed $46,756 to rehab and rebuild the, uh, well number five, which is a, uh, Sodik City well located just east of the high school on the other side of the ravine. I mentioned that at the last meeting that the board wanted additional information. So further testing was done, uh, regarding flow. And then that also indicated some vibration in the well. So it, it kind of, uh, verified that that expense is, is necessary. So we approved that unanimously and that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just what the manager mentioned, very excited about just very, very initial looks at trust fund score for the city, which is the 300,000, which would be on top of the 1.2 million dollar M.TAP and the 300 that may go to the township. So we're continuing to work through the process, look forward to more detailed feedback next week. But.
Great.
Things are moving along.
Good job.
As a, I think as a committee, we're very proud of the work.
Right, very good.
Where we are.
Great, well done.
For the trail, for the Blue Star Trail.
Very good, excellent. The Recycling Committee, we had our styrofoam collection event this Saturday, went very, very well. I know Councilmember Dean Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Dean came by and dropped off some styrofoam. We had 62 vehicles come through between the hours of nine and three. And thank you to DPW and the staff for their help with this. Dark Containers makes it really quite easy by delivering that semi truck and then picking it up on Monday. Is it gone, by the way? Okay, good. I stopped by yesterday afternoon, just checked out to make sure everything was good inside. And I think this time we probably got, I don't know, maybe a little more than a third full. So it remains my personal mission to fill that thing one day. So, and a lot of folks who were coming through were asking, when is the next event? So we'll try to hopefully have one in the spring again and get the word out, and people can start collecting their styrofoam, saving it over the winter. We had five volunteers, majority of them from the city. Linda Eschott, who's from, on the committee, and Kelly Roach, who are on the committee. Helen Baldwin helped out on behalf of Rotary and Kathy Brockington. And then Patrick Stewart, who is a resident of the township, not the actor, was also, also a member of the committee and was there helping as well. So very happy with the events that we've had this year with the Recycling Committee. All right, all right, council comments, start right back with you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Anything? Well, I'm, Councilwoman Stanton might mention it, so I don't know if I should go into the lily pad boats or not.
Go ahead, yeah.
Sure. I just had the pleasure, as part of my day job for the Environment Agency, visiting retro boats where they were demonstrating something called a lily pad boat. It's a boat made out of recycled materials. It is powered by electric motors that are supplied with their energy from solar panels. So these boats are completely self-sustaining. They're like the donut boats, but they're, they're more rectangular, they have solar panels. You, you drive them with a joystick, and it's really just exciting because, you know, you know, we're the only place in the state, probably in, in the nation, with, with a hand-powered, a human-powered ferry. You know, someday this could be, you know, the sister ship to our chain ferry. This, these lily paddled, solar electric boats just going back and forth. They use recycled aluminum, recycled wood that comes from Michigan, they're made in Michigan. They use recycled EV batteries, you know, EV batteries eventually need to be repurposed. And so these things use recycled EV batteries as well. It's just a really exciting project, and once again, I just have to compliment Councilwoman Stanton for just kind of having this kind of, um, this outside-the-box thinking to bring projects like this to Sagatuck. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of the city and, and behalf of my agency, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. So thank you.
Yes.
Very good, cool. Russ?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. First, I do want to bring up the petition that was in the packet, I know we've had some discussion. I do want to thank all the residents, business owners, and property owners that signed that petition. I, I, in my memory, don't recall a petition of this type ever being brought to the council. It does represent in my mind a level of accountability that I think our citizens should be very proud of for our council. It's also a great reminder that, you know, at the end of the day, our job is to be responsible and be accountable to those that live in this community as well as vote. And the petition I thought was well done, it was, it was, the items that were involved that, that were listed in it, in my opinion, were well articulated. I still think there's an opportunity to make sure that we are following this policy to the letter, because really the goal of that resolution was to make sure that the council is accountable and transparent to the community, and most importantly, to people that have an interest in serving on our planning boards and commissions. If they don't feel it's a fair process or it's transparent process, we will run the risk of not getting enough applicants to fill our positions. And so again, I thank the mayor for her, for her apology, that's important for the council, and it's important for our community. I thank everybody for those that signed it. Also too, I, I was a bit disappointed when the council workshop was canceled last week. The reason being is because I think the council workshops, in my experience, really ought to be used for not just agenda discussions for the Monday meetings, but policy discussion. Something that I, that I've heard from people I've been talking with, especially as the election season, season begins to gear up, even though I'm not running for office, people just begin talking about things that are on their mind. And I'm hearing a lot of policy issues, short-term rentals, waterfront development, what direction is the city headed? That they, from their perspective, are not hearing the council talk about. And in my experience, the workshop is a great opportunity to have open discussion about items that are being brought to us as elected officials, as well as I can imagine the city manager is probably hearing from citizens that are walking in and asking questions and perhaps bringing up items of interest. So in my opinion, the council workshop is exactly for that discussion, so we can have open policy discussions, some of which may go somewhere, some of which may not go anywhere at all, but it's an important venue for me as a council member to bring things to the table. So going forward, as I mentioned previously, when the last, when there was another council workshop that was canceled, I really view that as being a missed opportunity for us to have discussions. Also too, I want to acknowledge that the city manager did send out, based on Mr. Johnson's question, there was an email sent out just before the meeting with the costs for the project across the river with the legal cost. Thank you.
You're welcome, but it was all-inclusive.
Yep, thank you, thank you. Last item is, League of Women Voters has a forum, I don't think they're calling it a debate, but a forum on October 5th at All Saints Episcopal Church. And I was in contact with a couple of the people from the League of Women Voters who are organizing the event, and they've asked if the city could put an announcement on its landing page website announcing the event. And I contacted the city manager and the city clerk about this, and they asked that I bring this to the table for discussion. I think, in my mind, it's a no-brainer, we should be encouraging people to come to the event, hear about the candidates, hear what the positions are and issues of importance to the council and the city. And I would just ask that we just give direction to the city manager, so he can give direction to the city clerk and the staff to post that on the front page of the website.
Lauren, just going into the month of October coming up, I just want to thank everyone who volunteers for all of the events that are about to take place between what's going on with Sadaba and the decorating of town. I appreciate everyone who helps with that. The Glow Park Party that's happening, and then the Halloween Parade on the Douglas side of things. All of these events wouldn't happen without all the volunteers in our community, and we really do have an incredible amount of volunteers, and those things wouldn't happen without them. Just to jump on what Scott was talking about, just a little bit about the lily pad folks. We had a number of state dignitaries in town just to see this new innovative project. When they came to us, it was more for a business, just some information from us from a business perspective. But the fact that they wanted to use Sagatuck's harbor to test out this solar-powered boats, you know, we're just making a name for ourselves as far as being a place where entrepreneurs and innovators can come to our town and get support. So I just appreciate the lily pad folks and all of the state dignitaries that came to that event, and we were able to kind of show off our Sagatuck Harbor in that way.
Great. Thank you. Anything?
Well, my thoughts on the petition issue have really all been expressed. I just want to appreciate your handling of this in a, in a very forward manner, and we do appreciate that. So we need to get beyond that. That's all I have.
Further acknowledging your words, Garnet, you actually were apologizing for the, for the council also, because we approved those. So I just want to make that part of the record. So thank you. Question for Ryan, why would we not just put an announcement on the website about the, about the?
Yeah, I'll address that here to wrap up, I'll address that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I mean, we can't, we don't have another meeting, I don't think, before.
No, I'll, I'll mention, I'll make a comment up here at the end.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to congratulate DPW for a good Oval Beach season and closing things up. And I understand that you had some success with staffing, which I think is remarkable, given how difficult staffing is for everyone. So I think that speaks volume to your leadership and the kind of work that the both of you put into that, starting really in the winter, I think, so. Well done, congratulations.
Really quickly, a couple of things I forgot, just FYIs for everybody. Tomorrow, the Sagatuck Coastal Alliance Town Hall Meeting at the SCAs at 6:30. They have asked that we do whatever we can to attend, I think it'll be a very informative town hall meeting. And then a reminder that Saturday Glow in the Park is back, starts at 6 o'clock in Coughlin Park. Really quickly regarding the League of Women Voter Forum or any other kind of a political type of announcements. Generally, in the past, the city has always kind of been like Switzerland. The city has never posted nor promoted political activity. And that does not preclude us as individuals with our own personal social media pages on promoting that. And that's what I would advise that this group do. But for asking the city to post that really is, in my opinion, not necessary. Scott's online, I know that it is being covered in the commercial record, and it has been promoted quite, quite substantially already through the news and social media. So with that, I think, I think we're good. I don't want to ever put our city in a position where they're being viewed as political, political. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor.
So I can, second.
Second.
I'll, I'll. Adjourn, that's it. Don't need to talk about it.